Okay, welcome everybody, staff meeting, August the sixth, Tuesday, August the sixth, primary day. So Mr. Stoltz, take it away.
Morning Chairman and Commission, we have one topic today. Bill Trow is here to talk about some transportation study that was done specifically toward aging population. I think he, those of you who are WAMPO members probably know Bill, he's presented there before. So with that, anything from you? You're good to go? Any words, Tim? Bill, all yours.
And hit it. Okay, we could, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to correct you right out of the box. That the transit work that we are doing is for general, the general public. Is that I think, and that's what I think one of the things that we really run into, particularly when, I'm sorry, when transit is provided through a county, is that there's a perception within the area that, well, that's, that's for seniors, that's for persons with a disability, people that can't drive. And, and Sedgwick County Transportation is general trend, general public transportation. So anybody in the county that needs a trip between the town that you live in and the town that you want to go to, you're good to go. One of the downsides, I think, from is that if you want to travel within your own community, that there isn't really the, the opportunity to do that. Well, it all comes down to money. So the root of everything. Okay, so what I want to do is talk a little bit about the work that we are doing. I don't want to go all the way back to the beginning, but I will, if we, if we do need a little bit of background, just ask questions and we can give you the background on, on where we're at. But I want to focus a lot more on the alternatives and that everybody should have a packet of, of potential transit alternatives that could be implemented if there's funding, if there's support to address a lot of the issues that we've identified within the entire, in this case, the MPO area, which is principally Sedgwick County, but there is a little bit of Butler, a little bit of Sumner. But I think when it comes to the transit services and transit needs, other than, one of the things we did see is a lot of people going to Butler Community College in, in Andover. So from Sedgwick County, so I think that that's one of the things to, that we, we also have alternatives that can help us address those. Now, I'll also say is that we are concurrently doing a study for WAMPO that also needs, needed to go through this process of identifying alternatives. So the packet of alternatives that you see are broader than we would likely really develop and promote through Sedgwick County. That relative to the county, for the most part, we're, in my opinion, we would be talking about more of the same mode or the same type of transit service that's provided through Sedgwick County Transportation today, which is demand response, that, that the day before you, you want to take a trip or at least the day before you want to take a trip, that you contact Sedgwick County Transportation, you tell them where you want to go from, where you want to go to, a little bit about the time that you either want to get picked up or about the time that you want to be dropped off. And then a dispatcher or a reservationist works with the customer to arrange that trip, both from home or wherever you're, from your point A to your point B, and then your point B back to your point A. And, and even if there are intermediate stops along the way, you know, you're going to the doctor. So you want to go in the morning from your house to the doctor, but oops, now I got to go to the pharmacy. So your, your home trip then is, your trip back home then is doctor, pharmacy, home, that all gets arranged for that trip. And that, I think, is, is the primary mode of service or type of service that we would be talking about if there was more involvement or, or more service within the entire county. Also, but, but also in that packet, there are what we're calling as regional routes and that those regional routes are there to primarily address commuter travel. That, that the idea of, of how many people today and even more going into the future, what percentage of the population that, that has a job in Wichita or, you know, just right outside of Wichita are coming from Clearwater, are coming from Goddard, or coming from even Mulvane, that, that those regional services that we are talking about, and I know I went outside the county there, sorry. That those regional services that we're talking about are more fixed route, but are only operating a few trips in the morning, a few trips in the afternoon to, to accommodate that commuter service. And the destination in Wichita of those trips is back of those, of those routes is, is at the downtown transit center. Because the purpose there is not to take a person from, you know, their home in Goddard to where they're, wherever they're working in Wichita. It's to get them into the Wichita Transit System so that then they can go 360 degrees of the compass within the city of Wichita. Because we just can't, you know, there, there isn't enough time in the day to do that, that commute trip. You know, in a whole lot of, it gets you from where you want to go to exactly where you want to be. So that, but when you're thinking about, well, is that a type of service that the county would get involved in? Probably not. In that, in those situations, we would be looking for more participation and involvement from the origin community that, that has then that destination in Wichita. So there are, there are, and I guess the short story on the long part there is that there are alternatives in there that just wouldn't be applicable for the county to be a partner in. And so that you look at them, but we're not assuming that everything in there would be something that we would consider the county being a potential partner of. Okay. And then the other part that, that is the governance element here, understanding that within the, the region, there are 20 some odd jurisdictions that could be involved in some way, shape or fashion and more transit service within the area that, that we also then need to understand, well, how do we herd the cats? Is it everybody doing their own thing like Derby is doing and Hayesville is doing? Or is it, is it a more consolidated service of multiple communities getting together? Or is it the county enhances the, the service that you already have? So those, that governance concept has been, is being discussed now. And that also is part of that, and I think that, that, that a part of the impetus of, of us doing the WAMPO work was there's conversations probably constantly over the course of a cycle of years of creating a regional transit authority. And so that is another op, uh, element of that governance structure. So with that. Okay, for a second, I thought I had the wrong presentation. Okay, so just real briefly, and I think, you know, here is, here is our overall project approach is that, that, you know, we spent some time at the beginning getting an understanding of the needs. We had a series of public meetings in communities around the region to get an understanding of needs and gaps within the services that are available through Wichita Transit, through Derby, through Hayesville, through the county. And, and then from that information, we developed a, a, the whole package of, of potential alternatives that we are in the latter stages now of evaluating those. And, and the evaluation portion that we are in now is, hey, what does the public think? What do the decision makers think about each of the alternatives? Is there support? Is there, and, and is there support of, hey, we see that as a good idea? And it works better if I put on the, the community or the jurisdiction hat here. We, as a jurisdiction, like that idea, we think that, that we can help provide that or we will provide that service. Or are they more of a, of a partner in that idea? Yep, we like the idea, but man, taking on all of those things that we would have to do to provide that service are just beyond what we think we can do. But if we can find some other partners, we're willing to get into the game. Whether or not that might just be financially, that might be, hey, we could provide some of the, of the, of the services that may be needed through human resources or, or those kinds of things, but they could be a partner in the concept. And then ultimately, we need to get to our recommendations, which is really where we're heading now. Okay, as we're going through and kind of looking at those services, we, we kind of took a, a multiple step approach. Whereas we, we looked at the, the various service concepts and those again are all in there. But then at the same time as you're thinking about, hey, how, what, what is the service that we could provide? We want to have a parallel and integrated conversation of, well, who are the partners? And, and we, we, we look at, you know, the, I always like to think of that as in two steps because we want to make sure we're coming up with a broad range of ideas. But some of those ideas are just ideas, they're not good ideas. But we don't want to eliminate before we even have a discussion of an idea or make that decision. Well, that's just not going to be a good idea, so let's not even talk about it. So that's why we have that first screen of, well, some of our service concepts, they're an idea, but they're not a good idea. So we put those aside. We're also going to have some jurisdictions out there that say, yeah, adding more transit service just ain't for us. We, we, we either can't, we already know we can't afford it or we just don't see that we have a need. Okay, we're, we're a community of 300 people and, you know, that, that we just don't have a budget for that. And, and that, 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 so that we, we dismiss a combination of them. But then we go through and evaluate in a little bit more detail, coming up with ridership, coming up with costs, those kinds of things. Because at the end of the day, what we're looking for is this marriage of service, of partner and of, of how we're going to go about paying for it. Because if we don't have all three of those, we really don't have, we really don't have a concept. So our service concepts that we, I'll back up a second, that, that ultimately, as we were looking at needs, we, we have established kind of these categories of need within the region. Our first category of need was, was to better connect the outlying communities with job opportunities in Wichita. That, that when you look at the service that Sedgwick County Transportation provides, the bulk of the destinations of all of the trips that have an origin outside of Wichita is still Wichita. Because you think about, it provides work opportunities, it provides shopping opportunities, it provides medical opportunities. Those are the big three when it comes to the purpose that people are, are traveling on transit. So that our, our first need was, was to improve the, the level of connectivity of those folks living outside of Wichita with jobs in Wichita. The second was improve the accessibility for those folks that are living in communities outside of Wichita. That, 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 you know, that they, a lot of those folks don't have a, a down the street opportunity to get groceries. They don't have a down the street opportunity to go get medical service. So we need to improve, or the, 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 the goal was to improve the level of accessibility for those communities. And you could kind of think about that as also as those middle of the day trips, not the commute trips. And then the final one was to provide improved opportunities to get to those growing jobs that there are outside of Wichita. That when you look at, at probably 30 years ago, the, the number of trips or the number of jobs that there were in the region outside of Wichita was probably a lot, lot lower of a percentage of the total jobs relative to today. Is a lot of, of job opportunities are growing outside of Wichita. And, and, but, and you still have a good population in Wichita that's looking for work, but they can't get to those jobs unless they have transportation. So we want to make sure that we're not just thinking about getting people to jobs in Wichita, but to those growing oper, job opportunities outside of Wichita. So out of those three basic or ideas of need, we came up with themes that parallel those. And that what this is showing along the, the axis right here is kind of the, the general idea of the range of ideas that, that we have developed. And those could be express routes. And here, all it's listed as express routes, but in the packet that you have, we've identified specific express routes, an express route that gets us to Derby, an express route that gets us to the north end to Clearwater and places like that. And same thing with some of the regional routes. We, we developed more detail on programs like Vanpool of just expanding the, the, the level of, of service that Wichita Transit, or I'm sorry, that, that Sedgwick County Transportation can provide. So we've come up with this whole list of ideas and in the packet that, that we also then have essentially sub ideas of those ideas. And, and that in the packet that you have, that we've gone through and provided some of the basic detail on potential ridership of, of the cost of that service. But then also we've gone in and broken out the cost associated with, who do we think is going to be responsible for the local match? Because when you're looking at funding transit anywhere, there are generally four elements to it. That there's FTA, Federal Transit Administration, provides funding to regions. The state provides funding, the locality provides funding and has to provide funding, and then we have fairs. That fairs are only going to cover 15 maybe percent of the overall cost. I think it's like 11% for Wichita Transit, if I remember that number, which isn't a bad number. I mean, I work in areas where it's like 6, 7% of the overall cost is covered by fairs. And, you know, I think there's also still the, the, the idea out there is that, well, transit is something that should be able to turn a profit, right? And, or at least break even. Well, it doesn't do that in the US of it. Might do that someplace else, it doesn't do it here. And we, we just have to take that into, to account as we're looking at things. But the critical part of that is, is that, you know, we can't count on, say, some of those regional services that have a destination of the downtown transit center to get people connected in with Wichita Transit. We're not assuming that Wichita Transit is going to pay for that, the, the local portion. That what we're assuming is that if it, say, it comes from Goddard, that, that Goddard would provide the local match associated with that particular alternative. And so that, that's why in the packet, we broke out the costs in each of those categories. So that then as a municipality is looking at evaluating those alternatives, they have a pretty good understanding of what the ask will be of them to provide that service. Then they can incorporate that into their decision making. So, and then, so then what we, we've, we've also done is, is, okay, there's only so much information that we can get through public meetings. We've had two rounds of public meetings, three, a series of three meetings at each time. We've had, I think the first round of public meetings, we had maybe 11 or 12 people at each of the meetings and there were three. And the second round, we had a little bit more turnout, but it, it still wasn't, you know, we didn't have hundreds of people at a meeting. And, you know, talking about transit, you're not going to get hundreds of people at a meeting until you, you say, well, we're going to cut this route. We're going to cut that route, we're going to cut our hours of service. But when you're always talking about, well, what more should we be doing? We don't really get a whole lot of people turning out. So what we're, we did was, we put all the information out on the WAMPO website, gave people an opportunity to go visit it. But then we also had, had sent a, an email to, with access to a survey to each of the jurisdictions within the WAMPO area. And the ask of, of the, of each of the jurisdictions was to review the information in the packet. And that, over on the right hand side here is, is our survey and it was basically, okay, here's an alternative. And, yeah, and here's the information on that alternative. What, what do you think from your jurisdiction is, is a likely outcome? Is it, well, that one's just not applicable to us? Let us know. You know, again, that if you're, if you're Clearwater, the idea of regional commuter service back into Wichita, probably not an idea that you're really interested in or can afford. The other, another one was, yep, we're just, this isn't for us. And it, it, it could be applicable to us, but yeah, we're not interested. It's going to cost too much money or we just don't think that there's going to be the use. The, the next one was, well, yep, we like the idea and we could see ourselves as the provider. And the other, another alternative that they could answer is, yep, we like the idea, but we would, we would see us as a partner. And then what the last one was, can't remember, but the other, middle two are the most important. So we sent this to all of the jurisdictions, the last I checked, which was sometime late last week. I think we probably ended up sending it out to then 24, 25 different jurisdictions. We've received like nine or 10 back. I was hoping for more than that. So if you guys have opportunities to talk to the, to various jurisdictions or municipalities within the area, please encourage them to go out and, and look at the information and provide us with feedback. Because what we want to do with all of the feedback we get back then is, is put together final alternatives. And, and to me, some of the, and, and each of the, the, the map on the right, ignore the colors because I just reused the map because it just identified easily all of the jurisdictions. But, you know, that, that what we want to do now is put together essentially consolidated concepts. And as we were talking in the last round of public meetings, or it was within one of our stakeholder meetings, that for an example is, is that when you look at the area just north of, of Wichita, where you have Bel Air, Ketchikan, Park City. Further to the north, sorry, can't remember, pardon, there you go, that, that. This is the bill show, by the way. And so that there, I could envision that you could create a north suburban transportation network. In that, but so what I need to get back though is, is responses from each of those communities. Do you have interest? Because you think about that, what you could consolidate between them, each of those, that there's a whole litany of things that they could share the cost of, that if they, if they're doing it individually, every one of them has to do dispatching, every one of them has to go and hire drivers, every one of them has to go buy vehicles and replace vehicles. But if we can get groupings of communities together that are contiguous with each other, we could do that more efficiently by community. Because in reality, a lot of the destinations that each of those communities are going to have are the same places in Wichita or in their own community that they would have if they did it individually. So that, so that ultimately what we get out of, out of that input is, is who's got interest? And are you interested in being a provider or are you interested in being a partner? And if people are interested in being a provider, we can then go in and do a little bit more detailed work on the particular alternatives that they're interested in, or if they're a partner, we can then go out and look for partners for them.
Bill, while we're on the point, if we gauge interests with the cities that are in our districts, where do you want us to send them to? Back to the WAMPO link or the WAMPO study or where, how do you?
Send them to me. Hopefully I somewhere have my email address, but just send them to me and there you go. So it's in your packet, the, the bottom of the little button there, just send me your, your comments or your input. Well, also when you, if you go out and, well, yeah, then that's reaching out to the jurisdictions. Okay. So that, that gets us to ideas. Now we also have to think about, okay, we get a bunch of people in, in interest and, and wanting to be involved. Now we got to figure out how to govern the thing. Is, and again, is it, is it 15 independent operators? Is it, is it 10 consolidated operators? Is it one operator? And then that, so that's the conversation that we need to have. And, you know, starting over here on the, the left side, that, you know, in that decision making process, we have to think about the things of cost effectiveness and level of control, level of local control. In that if, if everybody's operating independently, you get to control exactly what you're providing. If you only want to provide transit service on Tuesday afternoon and you've got support in your community to do that, go ahead. And we can do that, but the cost effectiveness of doing that is going to be pretty low. And as we, we go through and kind of work our way to the, to the right, the assumption is that more communities are coming together to form a bigger coalition. And what happens there is the cost effectiveness improves, but my ability to do, in my community, do exactly what I want is going to go down. So we have that, that, that trade off of those two things and the, the goal is to find how we really want to do that, whether or not it's, it's just, well, two communities, you know, on a handshake agreement saying, yeah, we kind of share where we pick a lot of people up to a certain extent, but we also share a lot of the same destinations in Wichita. Let's just talk that if we don't have a full vehicle, that, that we, we talk a little bit and see if we can share the, you know, the Tuesday afternoon trip or whatever. But then we could also go down and, and start formalizing things a little bit more with some interlocal agreements, memorandum of understanding, those kinds of things. So that things are a little bit more formalized or we could develop, again, larger, one large agency, a couple of larger agencies to provide that. We could, you know, augment what, what Sedgwick County Transportation provides and have one agency for the entire county providing more service than you provide today. And, and that could be more service between communities. Or it could also then be adding on that, well, now I can, you know, adding on that ability to get service within a community. Because you think about some of the, the, again, primarily on the north side, some of those communities are becoming, you know, more complete. That, that they provide places to live, places to shop, places to, to work, places to get medical service within the community. But if I can't drive, I live in Park City, if I don't drive, and my doctor is, you know, just down the street, but further away than I can drive, I can't get a transit trip. I either have to, to get a trip from a friend, a relative, take an Uber. That, that, that transit isn't, isn't available like it is in a Derby, but it's provided there through Derby. So this is the, the phase that we're in now with the WAMPO study. And the, the key here is, is, well, why are we doing that? Well, theoretically, we could save money in the entire region. And that allows us in, particularly on those administrative things, that if we can save money on administrative things, we can put more money into service on the street. And then, but we have to do it within the guidelines. If, if we were to go to an authority, we have to do it within the guidelines of the state. And it's my opinion at this point in time is that in order to create an authority, we have to go back to the legislature. That, that the legislation that we've been able to find basically that says that, that defines a, a city or a metropolitan class city. And it also specifically calls out Topeka, because that's the only authority in the state. And so that we would have to go back to the legislature that would add time to that. But, you know, a lot of the groundwork on the rules are already laid out and if the idea And if the idea is, is to change that to another metropolitan class city, well, that's probably easier than Topeka had on developing all the rules. But then that probably also brings it back to Wichita. So it comes back to, does Wichita have any interest in creating a regional transit authority? And I've kind of heard mixed reviews on that one. Okay. And then the area, one of the key areas where what we're doing for the county is different than what we're doing for WAMPO is incorporating technology. Again, you think that, that, well, right now, I mean, the, I, there is some technology being used by Sedgwick County Transportation in taking reserve or recording reservations, in dispatching drivers, in, in communicating with drivers as they're moving along and, and providing the service. But there are other opportunities that would be enhanced, that would help enhance the, the coordination of service as, as more or if more is provided within the region. So we've been looking at these four areas of, of fare management, essentially collecting fares, dealing with, with money, dealing with funds. Cause it doesn't necessarily have to be money. It could just be funds. But there are, and we're, we're looking at, at that element. Automatic automated vehicle location, that there is already some incorporated into the process of Sedgwick County Transportation knows where their vehicles are most of the time, most of the time. But there are other systems that, that maybe that give a little, that may be a little bit more precise. But then the, the idea there is if we bring a bunch of systems together, they all got to be able to talk to each other. And that's really what the technology element is all about is letting different operators talk to each other. And then we also have the, the element of, of wifi. The understanding that, hey, some of these trips are getting kind of long and getting kind of bored, going all the way from Clearwater to Wichita. And can I improve the customer experience by giving them access to the internet so that it's consistent along their trip? And, and then the last part is just trip planning that right now, you know, if you want to, if you want to make a trip, you need to make a phone call. And you have to make that phone call while the dispatcher is, is at Sedgwick County Transportation. But if we had the ability to do that online, or maybe all it is, is looking at, how do I go about doing all of this and have it online? That I can do it at 10 o'clock after I get off of work. And somebody told me about this fantastic thing about, of Sedgwick County Transportation that I never knew and I grew up here. But now I can go and see how my trip could be put together or my trip from my parents or whatever. So these are the four areas of technology that we've been talking about. We, we reached out to the current provider that, that does the ride dispatching and the ride planning and talked to them about fare management with the intent of understanding from their, from their package or ideas of what they provide, which is going to be provided by others also. It's, hey, what kinds of things do you provide? What might the cost of some of those things be? So again, that we can understand as, as we have continued to have that conversation is the ask to implement when, when it comes time, or if it comes time to implement, what's that local ask? Is it $10 or is it $10,000 or is it $100,000? So we have a pretty good understanding of what that ask might be and can explain what you get for that ask. Okay. So where are we that, or this, I guess I kind of covered that already. But now we're, we're kind of hopefully when we continue to get input from communities, because we've done all the analysis, I think that we need to do. Now we, we really need to start organizing opportunities in either individual communities, combinations of communities, supposedly the only two we have. But as we, we put things together and, and essentially then come up with a consolidated plan for the region. And I, I think while there, there may be a perception that there's overlap between the two studies, but in, in reality, I think that it's, it also provides an opportunity to make sure that it's all coordinated. And, and there are, you know, you think about it, there's also different perspectives that, you know, we're coming at this work through the perspective of Sedgwick County, which is going to be different than a lot of the communities. It's going to be different, maybe even then, then WAMPO. So, okay, that's where I'm at.
What do we want to talk about? Bill, thank you. Appreciate the presentation and that. Thank you for you and your team and all the work you've done in this. Any questions or comments?
Well, thanks, Bill. Good to see you again. And, and some of us have been more involved than others. But I think most everybody on WAMPO has had a first, first crack at this. This is a more refined presentation than the previous ones that we've seen. So I just think for the, for the benefit, I know when we first started this, I had asked one of our staff, they did a survey of top 50 cities that are in, who owns their own transit system versus a regional authority, as you talked about before, transit authority. And there was only like four out of the top 50 are, are owned by the cities. The rest, I kind of had that feeling anyway, when I was at the city about the frustration of, of transit at the city of Wichita and especially the limitations that the government, federal regulations put on the fact that, that Wichita can only do the boundaries of Wichita. We make an exception with funding a little bit of money to go into Oakland. But the real crisis was that all the, the campus down at Textron, transit can't get in there. They can't get into the Spirit Campus. If Integra was going to happen, they would not be able to get into Integra and Integra was required. Integra was required in their application to include a transit plan and poor Integra. That's not in their, their mode of operations. It's not in their statement of work that they do a transit and not even knowing where their employees would come. And then the growth along the north I-35 there was, that's, that's going on. So anyway, I think that kind of helped focus the original conversations that were going on with, with not only some of the cities and people that care about transit, but actually with, with large employers. And so I just give you that background and personally, I, I, I kind of thought that a transit authority would be a good solution. But that's news to me that we would have to go to the legislation.
You know, I'm not a lawyer, but, but then, I mean, what I read there and, and when the legislation calls out a particular community, it just means you have to go back in and have it adjusted.
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't the, I mean, it's, you're probably talking two years.
But the fact that, you know, Derby Dash is, does a really nice job. And so looking at all the alternatives you talked about, do you, do you, so, do you help subsidize Uber and Lyft? I think, Bill, we talked before, even if, even if we expanded the transit system into the employer base, like down at Textron or whatever, for the second, third shift, I don't want to, I don't want to quote you, but, but he's saying.
You want me to go back through it?
Well, it's just.
Ain't going to be, it's no public transit and no Wichita at two o'clock in the morning.
Right. So there'd be a, an influx of the shift. And then, then you have six hours of dead times. So that would have to be.
But then inner alternatives to address exactly that, because then I said another one, I drank the van pool Kool-Aid. And for a Textron, anybody that provides that second, third, the second shift, third shift, a good alternative is an organized van pool program. And there are private providers out there that in my opinion, provide that service at a relatively reasonable cost. That, and, and that, are there opportunities then for the state to help subsidize? In Nebraska, where, where I live is that, that the state subsidizes probably about 25% of the cost of each of the van pools. They take some of their, their rural transit money and put it into that. Because a, a typical van pool today costs about $1,600 a month. You think that there's, there's maybe eight people in that van pool. Most of those people are probably getting to a job where they got to drive 15, 16, 20, 30 miles a day. And you think about the cost of gas to do that, you know, that you think, well, I'm in a van pool with eight other people. It costs me $200 a month. I can leave the car at home or closer to home. And, and, and that, and, and that, and, and still get to work consistently. And, and employers like it because people get to work consistently. And the only, the downside is that, you know, if you're, if you don't have the $200, well, and you know, you're just riding in, in, in a kind of a unorganized van pool. Well, those work okay, but there's no real necessarily any consistency.
Yeah. You know, and Bill, so major cities also subsidize employers. Employers help subsidize.
In some places, yep.
I know Washington DC for sure and whatever, because you get these notice and you, it's actually part of their compensation. But I, I want to credit also Spirit and Textron to help support data. They, they provide data to WAMPO and others about where, where, what, what zip codes do their employees live? So you can almost try to focus pockets of van pool. And, and I think both Spirit and Textron today, when somebody's being hired, part of their orientation, they ask the questions about if by chance we had transportation coming for the shift you're working, would you or would you not ride it? So there's, there's a good effort combined, I think, to try to analyze all this. That's a, it's a big, it's a big thing to, to bite, but.
Critical to have that data going in because again, that, okay, I can pull information out of the census. I can pull information from different areas, but, or different sources. But you know, it, it doesn't include the would you question to it. Cause it's all just travel data and we take a certain percentage of it.
So thanks, Chairman, for letting me make a few comments, made a little background, but maybe some of the others send some additional comments or thoughts.
Thank you, Chairman. So, and Bill, thank you for the presentation. You started off by talking about the county transportation is for everybody. You don't, you don't have to be necessarily senior to do this. You can do, use to go to work or visit. So go ahead.
Well, let's correct that because we have a few sources of funding. One is for general organization. And then we have another one that is elderly and disabled in the area surrounding Wichita that's defined by, and we get that money through city to WAMPO. And then we have county dollars that are focused on elderly and disabled. So we have three sources of funding, but I think the WAMPO study is really focused on the general rule.
Right. I'm sorry. And people online may not be able to hurt, may not have heard you because you're not into a microphone. You want to say that again for people who might be listening online for the record? Apologize.
So Cedric County Transportation has a multitude of funding sources. So we have the one that we get through KDOT that is general rule. And that's the one that really is kind of combined that we're looking at and what Bill is talking about for the general rule. And when looking at kind of a regional transportation, and that is for anybody that is in the rural areas as defined by that funding source. And that is, although it is general rule, what we find is that the majority of people who use that are either older or disabled. But a lot of that, I think our number one source of rides is for work, for, for that population as well. And then we have the funding that we get through the city of Wichita WAMPO, which is focused on elderly and disabled. And that is for the area that used to be, we used to serve through KDOT funding. And then when the 2010 census data was updated, the city no longer, we could no longer get that funding. And we got the money from the city of Wichita because they were not going to be providing that transportation. And then we also have the county dollars that are focused on elderly and disabled. And then we have some federal dollars that are for caregivers. So we have several different sources, but I think the intersection with our study and with the WAMPO study is focused on the general rule and how that could be more coordination or regionalization or working with the municipalities. And for many years, KDOT has talked to every grantee about, you need to do more coordination. We need to look at the people that are coming in from those outside the city of Wichita. Because we are the regional medical provider. People come here from across county lines and across jurisdictions. So that regional approach has some, been something that's been talked about for years. And as the population grows and the rural population changes and the employment opportunities, and as we have more people that are growing older and more people with disabilities that are trying to get in, that whole concept and idea of coordination becomes continually more important. So I think that's kind of some of the things that this study has been doing.
And in essence, you're still at the microphone. And these, these different programs have different, you already mentioned the elderly and disabled versus general population. But there's also other, there's other aspects of where they can be picked up or they can be dropped off. And then, so I'll just, I don't know if you want to reference that or not, but I guess my, my response is, I'm, I think I'm a pretty smart guy and I think I know a lot about a lot of things, but I'm completely confused on this. It's confusing to me. I'm sure it's confusing to everybody. And I'm not sure where anybody, where someone would go to get basically very crisp information about what are these different programs? What are the opportunities for people who need to get transportation? Are they qualified? How much does it cost? What are the, what are the rules? Again, to me, it's, it's not really very clearly explained anywhere that I'm aware of. Maybe it's on, maybe it's on the website. I've not looked recently, but I, I don't think it's really very obvious. And then, and then I guess because of the originus of these programs, it might make sense to say, I'm going to pick up someone who is not elderly or disabled and someone else who is on, who is basically the different programs, but we can't ride the same van. We have to send two different vans because two different programs, that type of coordination should be addressed. Go ahead.
Well, the general rule will pick up anybody in those communities that fit that definition. You're right. It is very complicated and hard to understand. Because what are those boundaries? And people don't clearly know those. We try to provide that information. We have some resources. We have guidebooks. We have information on our website. We have a number that people can call and get that information. And then about four years ago, I believe, we were able to access KDOT funding for a mobility manager for this coordinated transit district, which covers eight counties. And that is one of her functions and roles is to help provide that information, to help people know what the resources are. And they have different resources online. And it's called a mobility manager position because it is very complicated. And most of us in a rural state like Kansas don't ride the bus. So when it becomes that you no longer have a vehicle or you no longer have the functional eligibility, abilities or the funding, you can't afford a car, you can't afford the insurance, then it is very complicated. Because then you have to figure out what are the transportation options? How do I use a bus? How do I use the service? So I think there's multiple ways we're trying to get that word out. And I think WAMPO also serves that function.
And along that lines, how much of the, you mentioned essentially, you essentially mentioned, I think, four different programs that have different purposes and missions and, and how they work. And I assume different hours and different days and different ways that these are done. And, and again, so how much of that, those four programs are grant funded from state or federal? And how much, how many, how many tax dollars from the county are there to support any of those programs?
I will have to get you that exact breakdown, but the majority of funding really is state and federal dollars. That's where the majority of funding comes from.
I'm wondering, you know, you mentioned legislation earlier. I wonder if the legislature would want to modernize this program a little bit. They need to do some type of efficiency study at the state level for, again, these same federal grant dollars coming in. They're not necessarily, I, I, I can imagine not really talking to each other, that each one does their own thing. The end of the day, maybe third party. The end of the day, maybe third party providers, again, if someone is not disabled, if they don't need an ADA type of vehicle, perhaps an Uber or Lyft, or maybe there's Uber, Lyft that are ADA qualified. They can provide some of those. It might be cheaper to do this other ways. I think they need a modernization study on this at the state level.
Yeah. And and actually, some of the work that that Annette had pointed out is that we did with KDOT. And I know that KDOT is, is very much supportive of more coordination. And and looking outside of those traditional, okay, ninety nine percent of the service that is provided across the state of Kansas is just like Sedgwick County is that it's, it's demand response. And through either a department on aging or a community or or United Way or something like that, that that they are also very interested and and willing to look at the idea of non-traditional ways of providing transportation service. Now, the only downside is that when you get into the idea of Uber and Lyft, and if you're using state or federal, well, particularly federal dollars to help pay for some of that, that you need to have ADA accessibility. And that if Uber and Lyft is the only game in town to provide transportation service, it gets a little bit.
So they wanted to ask the client, do you need ADA capability? Or and again, if they say no, can they not send in a non-ADA vehicle? I mean, are they allowed to say, or is every single vehicle response to this have to be an ADA vehicle when someone doesn't need those?
No.
Those accommodations?
No, it needs to be available.
Again, so I think, again, and I would imagine if the state is getting involved in this, they would want to negotiate, you know, rates that would be maybe a little bit more taxpayer friendly. So again, I just think the whole system needs to grow a little bit. Can I go back to another? Yeah, what's something you mentioned a minute ago? So if someone is not disabled or not elderly and you mentioned that they, they can get picked up in the rural, there's rural include every city outside of Wichita. And you say the word rural, or does that mean not inside of any city? What does that mean by the word rural?
I'm getting my, the head shake of every community outside of Wichita.
Okay.
Now, there, okay, but there is, okay, we'll just stay there.
So the unincorporated as well.
So if we need to correct that, we'll get back to you.
All right. So if they want to go from the unincorporated or a another city outside of Wichita, they can't be delivered to a, a, something outside of Wichita. So it's like have to be from a city to another city, probably to Wichita, I'm guessing. They're not allowed to go like within, let's say Derby to Mulvane or Hayesville to Derby.
Yeah, that's what you can do.
Okay, they can do that.
But you can't go that, so I always like to use Goddard, but for some reason. But that if you live in Goddard and want to go shopping in Goddard, you can't take transit or transit is available to you. Pardon?
So you can or cannot?
That that service is not available. Now, if you wanted to do the same shopping trip and you started in Goddard and went to Wichita, that that trip can be made. And then if you've got multiple stops in Wichita, you can make those multiple stops in Wichita as long as your ultimate destination is back to one of the rural communities.
And there's multiple stops in Wichita. Is that Wichita Transit or is that this other service?
That's, that's Cedric County Transportation.
For each leg of that trip, it's another charge, I assume?
Yes.
And another, another appointment, you have to make appointments?
Yes.
If you want to go to Wichita and go to the doctor and then go back home, do they come, do they do other stops in between those two pickup? Drop off pickup or do they just sit there and wait?
It probably depends on the day. But there could be day, because you think about that, that all of the vehicles are in Wichita each night. And and the first trip of the morning could be somebody coming from Clearwater to need to go to the doctor. Now, getting all the way out to Clearwater and in all likelihood, you're not picking up twenty people in Clearwater to come back down to Wichita that day. And there may not be for that particular trip, it, it, there may not be logical intermediate steps because you need to, you, you, you want to make sure that that, that person isn't on a bus for three hours as you're, you know, going around trying to get a, increase your, your utilization, but.
And again, if I have an appointment with the doctor, I have to be at the doctor at a certain time. I'm really subject to this very, this, I may have to get there very, very early, otherwise, otherwise there may be.
Your window is what? Maybe a half hour early?
Okay.
They, they try to, so, you know, okay, not that I do a lot of dispatching, but I'm assuming that what happens is particularly when it's a doctor's appointment, what time do you need to be there? And then they back into what time they would have to pick you up depending on where you're living or coming from.
And generally speaking, what days of the week and what times of the day is this happening?
Monday through Friday, six AM to five-ish. Again, they're not going to leave you, you know.
Leg of that trip, that was the charge per person?
That I never looked at. Three dollars per, per, per leg. So if you're going to the doctor, three dollars, back home is three dollars. If you're going to the doctor, to the pharmacy, back home, that's a nine dollar trip.
Okay, again, more confusion. All right. Is there any, is there any, is there any county out there across this country? We have found as being the model government, governing body, if you will. It does this the right way, the best way. They're a poster child for how to do this the best way. We can look at, they have a similar population, a similar demographics. We have twenty cities that are spread across this great county. And we have one large metropolitan area and a lot of other cities are, are smaller. To me, this is a kind of a unique demographic, you know, geographic challenge. Surely we've looked at this around, around the country, look, they're doing it this way. It works well for them. We can look at that and adopt those ideas. I mean, is that type of effort being made?
Yes. As part of the WAMPO work, we are looking at, and because it's always better to use example, okay? And one of the examples we're using is the area around Portland. Because it does have a combination of, of the types of, of services that we're talking about here, the commuter and the regional services and things like that. And it, it, it goes from being very metropolitan to very, very rural. And so that that is, is one of our, our examples of other areas now. I mean, but it comes down to money is how much they're willing to put into that system relative to what they get out, what they want to get out of that system.
I, I have more questions now. I'll limit myself to two quick questions and then a comment. You mentioned that in this service, for the general population, that's not ADA necessarily or elderly. Does it pick up specifically this at their house and drop off to their destination or is it just simply getting you into Wichita Transit?
No, it's origin to destination. So if you need to go to the particular medical center, it takes you there.
Very good. Thank you. And then legislatively, I'm, I'm curious about this idea about having a authority. It's Wichita based when we have a county with twenty cities. It seems like this should be county based. Why is it, seems like it's a presumption that Wichita does this instead of the county?
Okay, so this is where we're still needing to interpret things. Where did that one go?
I, I'm concerned about the constitutional issues about people using taxpayer dollars and having, if you will, decisions made at a sub level of the, of the county when people's taxpayer money and their services are being decided by someone inside the city, but they have no way to influence that personally. There's a constitutional issue here.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't following that.
It, so someone lives outside of Wichita, their depending on a service is created by an authority that's Wichita based. Their taxpayer money is flowing into this. They get services from this, but they don't get to elect and influence the people making decisions.
Let's go back then. So that, that it needs to be organized by a metropolitan class city from my interpretation. But how an authority would then work is that you, that, that authority would put together a service area. And then there would be representation from each of those service areas. Now, that, that we, we've also gone through this, this same step in different areas so that and Michigan has a whole lot of authorities that are kind of ruralish. And and there, when you've got a larger metropolitan area and a bunch of small communities that, that the, the larger community may have, say, four votes on a board, but then each of the other jurisdictions have some representation. But and then other areas where it's, it's, you know, one jurisdiction, one vote.
All right, there's my final comment. So I'd like to have, I'd like to be, I want to be reminded of the sales tax that failed in Wichita. A portion of that was for transit and it, again, I know that there was a four headed monster that failed overall. I don't know that transit was the reason it failed. But that was a sales tax based, locally funded expansion of the transit services that, that failed on a sales tax base. I just, just generally speaking, if we do the authority, is it limited to a property tax one mil, up to one mil? As the slide says, because I would, I would tell you right now, anything property tax is dead on arrival. I can't imagine anybody voting for anything property tax. So saying that upfront.
Okay, I'm just going off my recollection, but I think it was property tax and there was one mil.
This is Kirk, Kirk Sponson, deputy county councilor. If I may step in and without me being an expert on this, part of this is going off of the fly here. But in reviewing the statute that you referenced, twelve twenty-eight thirty-nine, it's part of the Public Transportation Act or the Metropolitan Transit Authority Act. And based off of it, it is specifically referencing the city of Topeka. But in looking at a statute, it appears that what that specific code does is it established a Metropolitan Transit Authority Act or authority for the city of Topeka. And what they did is that Metropolitan Transit Authority is actually a completely separate entity
Yes.
from the city.
Yes.
And so that's how they geared that. It's specifically focused on the city of Topeka. Now, I'm not sure that that necessarily precludes the city and the county from working together to provide transportation services subject to different statute, which would be twelve twenty-nine oh one and sequential. And so that's the, that's the authority that talks about cities and counties airing into agreements for provision of services in general. For sometimes combination of services, that's where we get the combination of MAPD, things of that nature. Now, I think that would function differently from what's being contemplated here in that the city and the county would still have the authority over that board, if you will, would still be responsible for the direct provision of of funds and things of that nature, would still be responsible for employees and things of that nature. What's being contemplated here was a completely different authority that has a specific funding source. And that authority is actually individually responsible for its own payment of personnel and things of that nature.
And then, and I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in with Topeka. I believe that they established the the jurisdiction for the authority of ninety miles around Topeka. Because I remember reading that going, wow, that's a long ways. But you think about it, that gets some Lawrence, that gets some those other communities that you think, well, there's a whole lot of commuting going on that, and, and, and then that ends up being the taxing boundary for that.
That was my question. Yeah. So if that jurisdiction means they can get, they get services and they get a vote for, again, it'll be, whether it be a sales tax or property tax, it's a, it's a tax increase. They all get to vote. They all get to create the authority and then be served by that authority. I'll just say this, that, and I think that's a better way to do that. I'll just say this, I, I think that if we were going to even be serious about this at all, the, the idea of a property tax is just a non-starter. I think the, the sale taxes is interesting, but people have to realize they're going to get a new service and they have to, we want to support that new service if that's what they want to do.
And and, you know, as we've been looking in other areas, we just finished a study last year in Bismarck, North Dakota. And and the idea, and there, the same thing, property tax dead on arrival. And there they were looking and they already, they still have capacity within their limit. And even raising that was dead on arrival. And they need money because they're running in the red. And but then the idea of incorporating into, into a, into a sales tax, well, A, those generate a lot of money. B, they, you know, in a place like here that you got a whole lot of friends helping you because how far do people come to go shopping in, in the region? But you know, that, that, so there, it was palatable or I guess more palatable to talk sales tax, but property tax everywhere I've gone in, not in a million years.
Bill, thank you. A couple of last questions. The current, what we're doing currently, and then I want to talk about this plan, what we're doing currently, what is the ridership that Sedgwick County is doing now? The cost that the county piece of that, what does that cost now?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. And then that, when Annette was up, that she said they would get that, that number.
And the county cost, do you know the county cost, Lindsay, of what we participate in this program?
Well, I can tell you, based on the strategic results that are in the twenty twenty-five recommended budget book, that in twenty twenty-three, nine thousand three hundred sixty-eight rides were provided, but that was because of staffing shortages. They want to do more. And then in terms of budget, the overall transportation budget for Cedric County is just under, for this year, well, just at two point one million. Of that, three hundred thousand comes from the Aging Tax Fund. Another one point seven million comes from the Aging Grant Fund, which I presume mostly is the federal pass through from the state. And then the general fund itself has about one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars that it puts forward to that, get to that total two point one million.
Okay. And then this plan, is this, I can look at, it says table five is the cost estimates and ridership estimates of this supporting document. Is that what we're looking at here?
Uh, yeah, for that, for Sedgwick County would be a million
just north of a million dollars and we estimate forty-four thousand rides. So that's table five, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I, I think we're just talking about, we're discussing the the WAMPO relationship related to transit. It's, it's got a lot of federal requirements and hopes and even, even I think federal government through, through the MPOs around the country helped purchase the the bus, the bus, the buses themselves. So there's a, it's a real, it's a real confluence of stuff.
Yep. Whole lot of players. Every decision.
I, I appreciate what all you had to say today about this. A lot of this, I think, applies probably more to WAMPO than to our aging department. So, and four of us are on WAMPO too. It, it does apply to us as far as WAMPO members. I, I don't know how much of it that we could use for our aging department though.
Well, I mean, to me, the big part for the county is, okay, one of the, one of the options of providing more service would be to provide more capacity to Sedgwick County Transportation to do more. So that if, if right now, if the service is be able to, I can get from a Goddard to Wichita, which, and then back home, but I can't get within Goddard, well, you, you think about with Hayesville and Derby, both of those communities started service that theoretically they're, they're within their own boundaries, that I can get around Derby, I can get around Hayesville. But I think it probably didn't take them more than, I don't know, forty-five or fifty minutes to figure out that, that if I go just a little bit outside, I can get to a retail area in Wichita and that's really where everybody wants to go. So I think that, but then in each of those organizations, probably on a per capita basis, provide a lot more trips than Sedgwick County Transportation does. And that's because there's probably so many more people that, that that want to make, or that would make that shorter trip that they just can't make today. So that is, I think, is one of those those services that we included within the range there and in the cost that that could be beneficial to everybody within the county. Now, the idea of, of regional commuter service from, from Wichita to Andover, no. And but that we wouldn't be looking for the county to participate in that, but I think a lot of the, of the, of the expansion or you couldn't be a part of expansion of demand response service within the entire confines of the county. That could be a connection back to the commissioners in the county.
Just one more question. On your, on your tables, remind me again, like table two in the supplement.
Okay.
What's, what's the difference between the three, call it annual cost versus annual total cost versus annual local cost? On all those, including the last page?
Okay, so how, in that table that we've included a combination of what we think the service, providing that service would cost on a annual basis. But then really the decision, you guys don't care how much federal money goes into it or the decision on that. Your decision is going to be based on what does it cost us? So that's why we broke out the local cost.
Okay.
And in that, you can kind of just go along that line and go, okay, that well, I think the first one is Andover, you know, the cost is X and you go back over and, and we would assume Andover would cover that cost.
Okay, so that's the difference between the federal subsidy.
Yeah. Well, federal, state and fairs.
Okay.
Taking those three parts of the four-legged stool out of it.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Bill, thank you so much. Annette, thanks. Appreciate all the work on this. Tom, anything else? Okay. The uh, anybody else have anything, Dan? I think we're good. Tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM. See you there.